Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin, Chairman of the Planning Board. I called a meeting to order for July 24, 2023 at 6:32 PM. This meeting is being recorded. I'd like a roll call vote, please. Carol Huxley, present.
Laura Derry, present.
Laura Schifrin, present. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the letter of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, for nation, under our own individual liberty and justice. I'd like to thank all of our veterans and military currently serving us and also all of our first responders. If we have... We have somebody on Zoom. And I cannot see who that is. Wait, can't watch. Well, I need introductions of who's online.
Tony Lopez here.
Hi, Tony.
How you doing?
Jessica Fanioli, present.
Thanks, Jess. And who's top left there? Green shirt, glasses on. Unmute yourself. Is that your...
Can you hear me now? Bruce Ringwall, GPR.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I do not have any additions or deletions, right? I'd like to address Tony's people. Yeah, yeah. Hi, Tony. Thank you for joining us this evening.
You too.
And thank you for your volunteer response form. Is there any questions for Tony?
No.
No, but you saw his application?
No.
Yeah, we received that. Yeah. For this meeting, I'm sorry, maybe, I mean, if I have it in my last time. Yeah, because we haven't done it yet. Tony, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, sure, absolutely, yeah. So I've been a resident here for just under 20 years now and, you know, looking to give back to the community. We do as much as we can, you know, coaching, you know, tap sports and we have children in all of our schools. You know, I work for a large company, local company here as a safety director. Been an unrestricted licensed builder in Mass. 20 years this year.
Congratulations.
Very much. And, you know, we're just looking to, you know, just volunteer, give something back to the town, see, see what we can do. I'm willing to help and just wanted to volunteer to see what I can do for you guys.
Okay. We did get it, we did get this volunteer form the end of June, so it's been a while. I did get a chance to look at it and I know that you were going to try to be here far less maybe, but couldn't because of family reasons. I would entertain a motion to... Yes. She's in construction. Yeah. Yeah. I'll make a motion to appoint Tony Lopez. Twenty-fourth ever and have it sent before it's elected. Okay, so that would be to fill a vacancy only through the next election, which would be the April of 2024. Any other discussion? Carol Huxley, yes.
Laura Derry, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you so much.
We are going to have a public hearing, so be a good introduction for you.
Great, perfect. Thanks a lot. I'll stay with you.
All right. Carly, are you hearing us?
Yes, I am, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that our votes are being recorded.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that was on the monthly three. And then if I could, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the mid-asperity license 2023, which has been sent to us. I'll make the motion for the mid-asperity license 2023. Is there a second?
I should.
Okay. Any additions, solutions, corrections that you saw?
Right.
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve that, excuse me, the vote. I'll take a roll call vote. Carol Huxley, yes.
Laura Derry, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Okay, so now we have an appointed time, so I have to fill that time until the 6:45. I mean, only because that's what's published. Okay. The... Is somebody coming from the seventeen? Maybe they just pointed it up. Yeah, unlock door, okay. 2.1 open space information and update, anything?
I was waiting for the planning board to do a letter. This is bad, Jim, more of the draft.
Um, you have, we have the draft sent to us, right?
Yeah, she had a sample, sample of the letter.
Oh, George.
Okay.
Okay. It's where Jeffrey is just waiting, thinking for the Jeff to go on the ADA compliance stuff with the, he has a less than forty years. She was looking for it.
Okay.
So once he gets that, then the plan will be complete.
Okay.
The draft will be completed.
Our draft will be completed once that's done.
Yeah.
Okay.
The space plan draft will be completed. I just need, from what Jeff told me, I need a review letter from the board to select the planning board in the conservation commission. And that, oh, final notice.
So did you want the letter that...
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve that letter to be sent.
Yes.
Now I'll entertain it.
Oh, you'll entertain it.
Okay. What about you, Robert? Okay. Is that a second?
Yes.
Okay. Don't feel the discussion, I'll take a roll call vote to approve that letter.
Okay.
And Laura Schifrin, yes.
You approve the draft. The draft on the ground.
Yeah. Thank you. Point two, MBT, can we use compliance mission project update? Do we have an update on the MBTA?
Yes. This is from the MRPC, just came in this afternoon from Cheltenham, both through the principal planner. MRPC has continued to renew the five exploratory districts for the MBTA entity with additional abutting parcels examined for viability of inclusion into existing exploratory districts as they are grown up. At this point in the compliance modeling process, zoning by law language needs to start being considered. The law's requirements and restrictions, in parentheses, height, floor area ratio, lot sizes, setbacks, open space allotments, parking, et cetera, to refine the parameters of the modeling process. MRPC is beginning to renew existing multifamily zoning material for use guidance in Townsend's development of their MBTA zoning file law. Do you have a couple other additions? I would just add to that that after the last update on July 10th, President Sparsio sent a couple of questions in and MRPC responded to those. Those are in your folder, so the helpful information, some of the questions he asked might be similar to your own, so for the plan. We also have our next MRPC planning meeting with staff, that was down, is on July 31st. I'd also like to add that on further study, 85 Main Street was noted to be entirely in the act of no protection of the district and therefore not suitable against residential development and not recommended by MRPC.
Can I address that comment? I understand the act of no protection, however, one of the possibilities is that there are options. There are, rather, to our attention. Even though it may not be acceptable for dwelling units, it could be accessible for access to the other district's 45. And I think even though you wouldn't be able to build on it from the old certain structures, but I think it would be wise to have any development in that number three district to have access to the commercial area that's already there. So that's why I'm in favor of trying to include it, even though we know that it would be buildable in terms of buildable tenants.
Thank you, Robert. I have one minute. Just one question. Do you have a question about 2022? Maybe she and I have a question, but I don't do, convey that to Jonathan and he said that the next update, you will, he'll work on that. Okay. And thank you for your hard work on that level, those three questions, which is to generate your concerns. I'm going to think, he hasn't responded to you yet, right?
No.
Okay. But he's going to consider that. Not now, okay? We're at 6:45. I have, we'll come back to that, but I'm at 6:45. Okay, we have a public hearing scheduled. So I'm going to open the public hearing now for Fitchburg Road, 94, tentatively 96, age restricted development, site plan review, special permit, July 24, 2023 at 6:45 PM. I'd like the board members to introduce themselves. Carol Huxley.
Laura Derry.
And Laura Schifrin. Has everyone signed the sign and sheet? And has everyone on Zoom stated who they were? Okay, and now, let's see. Grayden, who's Grayden?
Two, but two for the 2.2.
Okay, and Jessica. And who's the J? Is that Jessica Fanioli?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure. If you see anybody else who comes on Zoom, they have to be noted. Okay, here I go. We've got glasses. In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48, 911, and the Code of Town of Townsend, zoning dialogues, 145-42, site plan review, special permit, 145-65, special permits, and 145-54 dot point one, age restricted development, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 24, 2023 at 6:45 PM in Miss Luckman's chambers at Memorial Hall, 272 Main Street, and via Zoom online meeting with the following. I'm not going to read the line. To review an application received by Howard Scott Baker for construction of three attached dwelling units, associated utilities, driveways, and outdoor recreation areas for an age restricted development located at 96 Fitchburg Road, assessors map 16, block 39, lot two, in both residential A and B zoning districts. Parties wishing to speak in support of or in opposition to this application may do so at the hearing or in writing prior to the hearing. Copies of this application are available for review at Town Hall during business hours, Townsend Planning Board, or Schifrin Chair, published in Sentinel and Enterprise, July 7th and July 14th, 2023.
I have two.
Yes?
I have.
Oh, that's okay. I had a cheat sheet. I got that all over. All right. Okay, so first, inviting the applicant. You have time to do your presentation.
Good evening.
Okay. Zoom is going to present for you. Okay. Already.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Ringwall from Goldsmith Preston Ringwall. Mr. Howard Scott Baker is in the audience, as is Jim Vassell from my office. When you introduced yourselves, and I thank you very much for that, I only heard three names. Is that correct? There's only three planning board members present this evening?
That's correct. We cannot...
And you are a five-member board?
That's correct.
So by state law, I need four votes and we don't have four sitting members. So I think we have a quorum issue this evening.
Then you can hear, you can hold the hearing.
We can hold the hearing, we just can't vote. So what will happen is, we do have an alternate member. Well, I can't find him tonight anyway, but he's not here. So, but Andrew is a sitting member of the board and he will review the tape and we can vote at our next meeting.
Okay. I have, I have, I have no problem with that. I just want to make certain that you have the mullin rule intact in Townsend so that that can happen.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And I see you have an associate member as well. Michael?
Yeah, but he's not here.
No, so, but he has the ability of mullining in also, does he not?
Yes.
Okay. It's, it's, obviously with a special permit needing four votes, I always like to have as most hands on possible, on deck as possible. I understand it's the summer and we'll, we'll move forward with there. So I believe that Beth has the ability of providing the documents that we've submitted, if that is correct. If Beth could bring up the, the site plan?
We have that on the list here.
You have it in front of you? Okay. All right. So if I may, the, the property is located between 92 and 96 Fitchburg Road. We've labeled it tentatively 94, understanding that it isn't until the property has a set address that that address can be used. Oh, there we go. There's a plan. Thank you, Beth. So, so this is, this is the front of the property. There is a locus somewhere that shows the, the tail that goes to the back. There you go, up in the corner. Thank you, Beth. The property itself is two, just shy of two and three quarter acres. It has just shy of 170 feet of frontage, but for the requirements of this bylaw, only two acres and 100 feet of frontage are necessary. The, the property, as we've proposed it, is for one dwelling with three units. Each unit meets, in our opinion, the guidelines and in a minute, we'll go through the architecturals, but I'd like to stay on the site plan right now. Each unit has two bedrooms, a master bedroom and a, and a guest room, if you will, a bathroom. Each unit is set up with a zero entry step in that they're all ADA accessible, as is the bathroom layout and the maneuverability and the doorways within each proposed unit. They have a, a small porch in the front yard, a small deck at the main living level in the rear, and they each have a walkout, given the topography of the site. So going through some of the guidelines, as I mentioned, we are in a District A, R A and R B. The district line cuts across the front of the property and we meet the, the requirements for those relative to the age restricted bylaw from that standpoint. The property is supposed to have a, a minimum of 30% open space, of which not more than 25% of the required open space can consist of wetlands. We are meeting that in spades. The proposed common open space for this development is 84% of the property or 99,700 square feet. Each unit is required to have two parking spaces. We've proposed one space as an accessory parking garage, private garage within the building, and one space in front of each unit. And as you're aware, with your bylaw, for every three units, there needs to be one guest parking space. And we have a, a double wide space in front of the northernmost unit, unit A, which will allow for a guest parking space as well as allow for a turnaround from that unit, vehicle from that unit to back up into the turn, the parking area and, and leave if and when a car is parked there as well. The other two units have the space to back up within the driveway so that no one has to back out onto Fitchburg Road to get out of their driveways. We talked about the unit sizes a little bit. There's a requirement for common meeting space and outdoor activity space. We've proposed that. Beth, if you could slide this image just a little up the plan sheet? Up the other way, please. Perfect. Whoop. Down a little. Awesome, thank you. We have a walkway that is kind of serpentine on the right-hand side of the unit as you're looking at this. And thank you for running the cursor down there. That walkway is less than 5%, so it is not a handicap ramp. It does not need railings. Being less than 5%, it doesn't need to have leveling areas. It meets all the ADA guidelines for universal access so that a resident or a guest from the front of the property can go down this path to main access to the outdoor space in the back. We've proposed raised garden for each unit as well as some gathering space and tables out there in the back and made a nice level lawn area. There's much more open space that goes on down in the back, but all of the proposed development is outside of the 100-foot buffer from the wetlands. As you can see, we've put a erosion control line in there. We have the 100-foot and the 35-foot no disturbance buffer shown, and there's a little bit of wetlands. You can go by on upland land all the way out into the finger of the back of the property, should people wish to explore the back of the site. But it's, it's just additional land that is there and available on the property. We've done soil testing with the Board of Health and we have a system area shown here where we would be designing a septic system for the six bedrooms, but as age restricted, so that is 150 gallons per unit versus 220 gallons per unit in accordance with Title Five in the Townsend Board of Health regulations. We have currently on the property, because where you folks met last week, and I apologize I wasn't able to be there, but I had another hearing in another community, where you met the old driveway going in that used to serve 96, 96's hence since put their own driveway in. That driveway area, hard gravel creates what we call, from a drainage standpoint, an impervious surface of roughly 1,600 square feet. We're putting on either the north and the south side of the lot up near the road, two bio-retention rain gardens to pick up runoff from the front of the property as well as recharge area in the back to catch the clean roof from guttered roof flow into the recharge area in the back of the property, right behind unit C. Yeah, right, right in there behind unit C and that space there. We have submitted a minor stormwater application to the Conservation Commission and Jessica, when she was still in that capacity, had agreed with us that this qualifies as a minor application and we are awaiting their review. We have several trees on the property that need to come down for the construction, those that line the driveway itself, the old driveway. One that's right up by the road, right on the corner of this proposed walkway and the driveway, which we will do everything we can to maintain that. If we have to shift the walkway a little bit, we will. And there are a number of trees that are right along Fitchburg Road that we'll be maintaining. And then there's a number of mature trees that are just on this property side of the stone wall of the property between this property and 92 Fitchburg Road, which we'll be maintaining. We intend to submit to you a planting plan for foundation planting, shrub growth in front of the various three different units and adding a little bit of planting to both the left and the right sides to supplement and complement that which is there and able to stay. And on the right side, replacing some of the trees that will need to come down as we do the grading for the ADA pathway to the rear of the property. That pretty much in a nutshell sums up the submission. We are very excited to be amongst your first, if not the first, in your age restriction bylaw. And Scott is excited to move forward with this and turn it over to you folks for any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. Next in our process is to go through the referrals that we receive from various departments. Now, would you mind doing the reading that we need to speak on? Only because I can't read it.
I'd like to...
Yeah.
Mandatory referral from the police department is... Recommend keeping the vegetation low and maintain in the sight lines clear along the driveway entrance exit to maximize safety during ingress, egress vehicles to Fitchburg Road. Can't consider signage, vegetation management is insufficient. And that's signed via phone conversation with Lieutenant Chris Peach on July 24, 2023. This is from the Highway Department, no comment. The Fire Department, the IBC requires that residential units of three or more will need to be sprinkled and monitored with a fire alarm system. And that's signed, Michael, I'm not sure, Grimley, Grimley, and that's 723. The Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen thanks the Planning Board for all their efforts and trust of their decisions to be for the best of the town. will be for the best of the town. And that, uh, trial flexing uranium, seven eleven twenty-three. Uh, from the water department, looks great, no concerns. This is from the board of health, must abide all state and local regulations specifics. And this is from. I believe, okay. Okay. Okay, the housing authority, uh, oh, the board wants to support the planning board decisions on Fitchburg Road. Please let me know if you need anything further. Jody, just permission. That's July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. The land use coordinator, existing contour labels missing from plan. Proposed planting slash landscaping should be considered. Please review packing setback for property wise. Recommend adding saving vegetated buffer within the ten day, uh, thought themselves or whatever, I think that's not yourself. But was this, as this is from land use coordinator. And then Jennifer, I don't know, consultants. Jessica, is it Jennifer or Jessica? That's Jessica. Yes, Jessica. And that's dated July eighteen twenty twenty-three. And this is from. What are you reading there? Uh, and so referral comments, but that actually can be treated as a referral comment, but I did put it in the cabinet so that the board could, um, still, so it'll need to.
Madam Chair, may I respond to those?
Uh, yes. Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. Um. I heard from the, if I were, if I, I think I tried to take notes, it was a little hard to hear some of that, but, uh, uh, relative to the sprinklers, uh, if you're on our site plan, we have both a domestic water source and a, uh, fire suppression, uh, sprinkler water source taps proposed. Uh, the applicant and the architect are aware when we have, uh, greater than a two-family, a three-family structure, that you need to have sprinklers, and we are proposing to put sprinklers within the structures. That'll be part of the plan review before the building commissioner and the fire department, when we get to that phase of the project. Um, the other thing that I heard was, uh, from the land use coordinator. Um, I'm, we had contour labels that, uh, got wiped out by, uh, wipeout text in a few places. Um, but we will modify the plan when we submit a, uh, the planting plan that I spoke about and add some more, uh, contour labels on the existing contours so that that's easier to read. Uh, lastly, there was a discussion relative to, uh, parking, um, and a question of relative to, uh, whether the project meets one forty-five thirty-three C five of the towns in bylaw. Um, Beth has, uh, forwarded these comments to us over the, as they've come in. And, uh, last week I submitted to Beth a memorandum of our understanding of this particular section of the bylaw. And if it would please the board, I'd like to basically touch base on that memorandum real quickly, um, as how we feel the bylaw in this project relate to one another. Um, as I, as your bylaw states in the, uh, assisted, um, of the age restricted, uh, section under one forty-five fifty-four point one C eight, each unit requires two parking spaces. And we talked about that briefly in my presentation, and for every three units, we need to have one. So that's seven parking spaces. Um, in your definitions of your bylaw, there is a, a definition for accessory use in building. Uh, it says a use or a building which is subordinate or customarily incidental to and located on the same lot with the principal use of the building to which it is accessory. It also has a definition for apartment or multifamily building, and I thought that that was relevant. Um, because even though this is age restricted as a three-family, under Massachusetts law, it is considered a multifamily structure. And that definition says a building designed and constructed so as to contain three or more units, uh, three or more suites of one or more rooms. Each suite provided with individual cooking and other facilities for independent housekeeping, use or, uh, intended in non-transient housing of three or more families. And then it talks about, uh, I also added in here yards and a front yard, which is the open space extending the entire width of a lot from one sideline to the other between the front lot line, that against the road, and the nearest point of the building of the structure. Also, I've noted, made note that in your bylaw definitions, there is not a definition for, um, private parking. And I made note of Article Six, Land Use Relations, one forty-five twenty-six, Residential Districts A and B, permitted uses. Number ten under those is accessory use customarily and incidental to a permitted use on the same lot um, or a lot adjacent thereto, including the following. And then under friends C, it is a private guest house, a tool shed, a playhouse, a tennis court, a boathouse, or other building or structure for domestic use, a private garage for motor, motor vehicles, but not including more than one commercial vehicle other than farm vehicles, or more than one vehicle owned by a non-resident of the premises. So we, as the design, design team, uh, Mr. Scott, uh, Scott Baker, his architect and GPR for their engineering, um, work together on this. And with each unit, we have the attached a accessory private garage. So that's shown on the site plan so that one of the required two parking spaces for each of the three units is within the building. And then that limits the parking area, if you will, to four required parking spaces. The second one for each of the three units plus the parking, uh, the exterior guest parking space. So in our position that we are not in need of following section one, um, one forty-five thirty-three C five because we're not creating a parking area of five or more vehicles. Further, the one forty-five fifty-four point one D requires that age appropriate design, which includes universal access. Um, universal access, otherwise known as ADA, uh, BEA. Uh, these are the Massachusetts and the federal guidelines for accessibility. Um, and given the site and most sites in New England and in Townsend, um, having a bit of topography and relief, these additional parking spaces really need to be right in front of the building. So fortunately, we're under five and we have just four parking spaces. So in our opinion, we are meeting this section of the bylaw because we're not creating a parking area of five or more spaces in front of the building, which I believe is what the bylaws is intending to address, is not having these large parking areas, um, between a building and the main road. And I think we've accomplished that. Um, but obviously you folks are the ones that get to vote on this, so I turn it over for you, for your feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your response. Um, let me, or any questions?
I, uh, had the opportunity to review this pretty comprehensively, uh, last Friday. And, um, I agree with your summary of compliance. Um, and, and I regard, um, I find everything satisfactory. Um, I do have some comments and maybe a question here on about the fire suppression system. Um, did I understand you say it was a domestic system?
Well, when, whenever we do a structure, uh, that has a fire suppression system as well as domestic water flow, um, we always provide two separate services. One service will come into these buildings, uh, into the building, and it will be the domestic flow, i.e. your kitchen sink, your bathrooms, et cetera. And then another line will go in that will be solely for the fire suppression system for the sprinkler system within the building.
That's kind of cool. Um, the, uh, the contours, uh, I can see they're ideal for, um, age restricted development. Um, so that they require a lot of earth contour changes. Um, so my first question was on the upper left corner, um, near the Brian Fornio property. Um, I assume that those two grade elevations are for the stone water system. I'm sure.
That, that is correct. Right in that corner, there is a, uh, a stormwater system proposed there. Uh, bio retention basin will have surface flow coming across from about the center of the driveway. Um, pretty much the two-thirds of the, of the pavement will flow to the north and one-third will flow to the south.
Well, um, I understand the stone water system, that's fine. As far as the fire retention system, it really isn't going to be that actionable for a pumper truck. Um, and, um, so I don't know. I, I'm sure this fire suppression system hasn't been designed, and that will all be a part of the building department review anyway. So I'm not too concerned. I just want to be sure it was an automatic sprinkler system. Uh, other than that, my other comments were, um, uh, similar to concerning the landscape in the front. Um, you've explained the parking pretty comprehensively. Um, I think it would be easier for people to understand that we saw specific parking spots. Um, so I understand three of the units have, um, garage parking facilities within the building structure. Um, but, uh, where the guests are is not very clear in the graphics we have before us. Um, so that might help, um, if you can provide something, an update on that before we do the final, um.
I thought they were to be right under the garage doors, and then the other one was at the turn around.
Oh, I see.
Is that wrong?
That's what I assume is correct, yeah, but it's not. I mean, the illustration on the left sort of presents the three garages. Um, and then. Yeah, I know, but, um, I, I, um, so. I, I think the plan should identify it through all the spaces where they are.
We could, we can certainly make it a little clearer for you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. That was all. Other than that, I found, uh, everything was more than satisfactory to me. And there was a concern about, uh, landscaping at front. I agree with the police department, uh, making sure there's plenty of visibility there. Um, and then from the, uh, land use coordinator, um, I think we'd like to preserve a lot of scenic roads as much as possible. Um, that's, uh, an objective we're trying to do, um, in our new, um, new zoning changes that we're going to be recommending to the town. Um, so if you can maybe help us with that a little bit, um, uh, I think that would be very valuable to the small. That's in the white comments.
Okay, okay. Now I want to listen to anyone in the audience who is in support of the proposal. Or on Zoom. I don't know who else. Support on.
And we'll hear what you have to say.
Oh, can I get a second?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, that's it. Would you just make that?
So.
Would you introduce myself?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Janet Grant, uh, Realtor, uh, from Carroll. I, so I am the, uh, Realtor helping assist Harley Baker with the, um, proposed project. Um, as a Realtor, you know, we are very limited to housing, it's a big current issue. And this lot just happened to be something that, uh, was introduced to me. And also I spoke with some of the building department, and they talked about the affordable opportunities. I introduced Scott to it, and I'm very excited that we can offer three units, fifty-five and older, to the town of Townsend, and hopefully everybody's in agreement.
Okay, so, but, so they're going to be sold, each unit will be sold?
Yes.
And so it will be, uh, age restricted, not affordable, but age restricted?
Correct.
Okay.
And I don't actually have all the information currently, but we'll provide it as soon as we're available.
And the, uh, so then of course you'll have an association. You'll have condominium, docks, and whatever else. Okay.
I think, I think it'd be important that, what they have told me, uh, that, uh, there were more chances of age restricted issues.
Oh, correct, they have to. It's not guided by state, right? They have to deal with state on that end, and they have to, no. They go through this under our bylaw, but then because it's fifty-five and over, there is a state requirement, and they have to fill those, which have nothing to do with the town. Okay. Um, opposition?
Yes, I'm trying to, I need to, it's actually not trying to, but it's. You addressed my concerns of the excess rest of the church trees that are right next to the property. My, uh, other two concerns, uh, are with the drainage. The water that comes off Bayberry Hill, which is to the eastern face of Bayberry Hill, comes right down into the area between the property of ninety-six and ninety-Fitchburg Road.
What, what, excuse me, what, what accuracy you?
Ninety.
You're right.
He's next door, right next door, all the trees, you know, there's a whole line of trees, east to the left.
I'm going to know where you're, I'm sorry.
The northern, okay, northern, the northern of butter.
Okay.
East of butter.
Right. You recently purchased that property?
I did, I was twenty-nine.
I would write it down.
Oh, God. Um, so the drainage that comes off Bayberry Hill goes in between those properties and that vegetative strip between ninety-six and ninety-Fitchburg Road. That water with the grading that is going to go along or moving, it's going to be proposed to this site. It's going to push that water into my property. I have, uh, fields on my basement. And so my basement's going to be persistently flooded by this, by this property. I posted that. Also, because of the location of that thirty-six inch pine that is at the, uh, corner. Also, because of the location of that 36-inch pine that is at the corner of the proposed unit A, I know they're going to have to take out some fairly large trees, but the large pine is directly across from my side door. So the whole living space of my house is going to be exposed to the porch side of unit A. They're basically going to be able to look into my living room from the porch.
All that area is going to be disturbed.
So I'm curious about, I'm not opposed to having a neighbor, I'm just opposed to being that intimate with my neighbor. So I would propose, if this is going to go this way, I'd like to have some sort of privacy barrier erected on the other side of the mature trees on the proposed property side, so that I did not have to be contributed upon.
Let's see, in the site plan that's proposed, we see all the new contours that are going to be happening, and we saw the proposed stormwater retention system there, which I think we need more confidence, it's not telling the problem from not having any water from your property. And then I think, you know, pursuing the landscape plan further and requesting when we can review the privacy concerns that they have. But there's both potential concerns, and I think we're best to address them. Are you on top of what we're talking about, sir?
I think I heard most of what he said. If you look closely at the plan, the dark contours look like they're pushing the water towards his property, but the gray ones create the other side of a swale. So the water's going to be swaling down away from his property. If you look at the stone wall on site, you can see the wall, then the mature trees, and then the grade kind of breaks away from the wall. It's going to continue to do that, and I think that Scott and I can meet with him, and we can talk about some plantings along the side. But we are proposing some landscaping in there, and we'll address that. Now, relative to the drainage coming from Bayberry Hill across the way, we're picking up and detaining drainage on the site that's created from the site. We're going to go from 1,600 square feet right now of impervious area that's not being treated at all, down to 600 square feet, which is essentially the lower part of the walkway that's on the right-hand side. So I would disagree that we're going to be adding any water towards his property whatsoever. And we would be happy to work with him relative to some plantings along that side to help them out on that side. But the building, as designed, meets the building setbacks from both the road and from his property. And I think Scott's looking to be a good neighbor, we're looking to be good neighbors, we can work with him on some landscaping.
Thank you. I know that when we did the sidewalk last week, that was like the first question we asked, was are the trees going to stay? Will there be privacy with the neighbor? Okay, so that was addressed by us, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I walked you off the driveway, it's going to be rocks and peaches of that 36 inch pine that they're growing as well. I'm assuming that massive stone that's in between the properties is going to stay, and you're just going to graze over that?
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
There's a rather large stone that's in the middle of that vegetative space. Are you familiar with that?
I seem to recall that. It's like about 60 feet back from the road, if I remember right.
Yep.
Yep.
Is that to be part of the grade, or are you going to remove that stone?
We haven't looked at that detail. When we get out on site, assuming that we get permitted, we can discuss it.
Okay. Because if the grade stops at the top of that stone, that's why I was very concerned about where the drainage was going to go, because that is much higher than my stone wall, so we would push it into my side. I understand the mention of the swale that's going to be in between, so I get what you're going for with this, but I still am a little concerned, because I get run off coming down my driveway all the time. I don't want more.
What I see here is the basic natural contour of the ground towards your property. So if we looked at the end of your property, to where the finished first floor would be, it's probably eight feet above your own building, and then they have a whole ten feet of building of that. So it will be very dominant. It'll be going down here at my phone. So I would think we might suggest that they propose how they respond to that.
Okay. Just for clarification, that the minor stormwater oversight, is that going to be met?
Conservation agent.
Yep.
And they did send an update. He had a complete application, and he was about to decide.
Yes, he was.
And he had been processed by the county. Continue. Up here we go.
And they understand that this is a...
Relation.
But that is...
Relation.
Oh, yeah. It's only before that project is completed, and then the stormwater is under the conservation agent, but that's not... Okay, yeah. It's not us.
Is...
Okay.
Can I get a copy of this?
Same thing. Yeah, this is my copy. Okay. Any other comments? Questions? My answer now, I did not get anyone else. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the hearing to 6:45 on August 14. I'll make a motion to continue the hearing. 6:45 on August 14, which is our next meeting. And then in the interim, I'm sure that the other two members will be reviewing tonight's meeting, and we should be good to go for a vote on the 14th. Okay? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure we'll have an answer to that.
Oh, no, we didn't.
You didn't do it again?
No, we didn't. We completed. We didn't, did we? Yes, ma'am. I was just...
I'm hearing here.
Are you yes or no?
I am yes.
Okay. Laura Schifrin, yes. Okay. The hearing is closed.
Excuse me, the hearing is continued. Excuse me?
Yes.
The hearing's continued and not closed, correct?
I meant it was just, it's continued until 14, at 6:45, yeah.
Thank you.
Good work today, ma'am. Good evening.
Okay, you did. Nice evening, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Bye-bye. And then all the members plus Michael will get it before the meeting, so they can review that. Okay. There was not a storm, so he's bailing hay. He's in the hay field in the rain. Yeah, well, I don't know, it's pouring hail.
It was.
Well, you know, farmers, they're used to weather. Okay, so we are past the 7:15. And is 7:15 Reagan? Hello?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. For some reason, my video's not working. I don't know why. I'm sorry. Okay, you ready for me?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's 7:32 right now.
No problem. All right, well, good evening. My name is Reagan Andreola with Beals &amp; Thomas. I'm a registered landscape architect and associate here on behalf of Nexamp for the annual landscape monitoring for Lockbrook Solar located at 22 West Meadow Road. So I did go out to the site on June 30 and reviewed the plantings. Sorry. Yes, and you can see that I did submit a letter comparing things, you know, from our original, you know, original landscape plan to, from, and then in 2021, to the monitoring from last year and 2022 till this year. So in general, there was a loss of two trees. So we went from 18 out of 22 trees last year down to 16 of 22 trees. Obviously, you know, not ideal to lose two, but you know, the remainder of the trees that are out there all actually appear to be in fairly good health. And I can run through photos too in a minute if you want, although I didn't include photos in the memo. Yeah, if we want to go through there. So, you know, as we had, you know, talked about last year, there's, you know, we had a significant number of shrubs that were proposed, and really, you know, the shrub layer was one just to kind of bolster the, you know, habitat along the edge there, but really, none of those were providing screening value. And the, have, most of them have been kind of out, you know, outgrown by the existing vegetation along the edge there, kind of that existing hedgerow. The trees themselves are what have survived and will be providing the screening, screening value. So as you can kind of see in that lower photo, that is the largest gap along West Meadow Road, and that has the largest clumping of trees, all of which have survived in the last year. So there's actually significant growth. I was pretty excited to see that these, especially the evergreens, have kind of widened in size. I know last year we were in a significant drought situation. This year, not so much, and certainly not a drought, so things have been thriving with the water. So growth is for what's, you know, what is out there is certainly visible and evident, so that was promising. And then, but you know, there are still gaps along that existing, you know, along the frontage there. So, you know, obviously, the most significant gap down at the southerly side, I think, is successful, but you can kind of see that, I'm calling it like the middle gap, which is pretty much a straight view on of the solar array. You know, I think there had been a tree right there in the middle that did not survive, so, you know, that view certainly isn't screened. There's a couple more gaps along the way that you can see, you know, in that, yep, that top photo there, there's two service berry shrubs that, you know, they're kind of like a multi-stem, you know, large shrub, small tree, and they're certainly growing, and they've definitely shown improvement from last year. But obviously, they have a little ways to go before they provide any screening value. So, you know, generally, we're down to about a 72% survivability of the trees from when they were originally installed. I don't believe there's any, you know, minimum survivability rates in the, in any of the conditions, but obviously, we do want this to be effective. So I would say that I think we have, you know, I'm happy with what has survived, and I guess it would just be up to the planning board, you know, how you feel about, you know, we originally proposed 22, or installed 22 screening trees, and we're down to 16. So, you know, it may be, you know, maybe it's beneficial for, that a few of these get replaced in these select locations to improve the screening. Obviously, I'll leave that up to the planning board to decide, so.
Any recommendations from Jessica? You're having that, any recommendations from Jessica? Jessica?
Hi. I agree with Reagan that, yeah, there was no minimum percentage. I think sort of typical is 80% survivability, so I probably would recommend planting a few. I don't have the decision in front of me. Sorry, my three-year-old is right next to me, so he might start talking. So I do just remember the language from one of the decisions. You have to go pee. Okay, go to the bathroom, please. Thanks. Sorry. And that it is up to the discretion of you guys if you do want to fill in some of the gaps. So I think that the point of screening vegetation is to screen the subject property, so I think it should be considered.
Okay, so we're down six from what they required originally, and what is the board's pleasure?
Those that didn't survive, make the two in place?
All of them, or go with three of them? At the recommendations?
Well, four, we won. Is that right?
No, they're down six trees. From the...
Six, yeah.
Yeah. From 22, they're at 16.
That's the only one with three.
Yeah. I mean, they suggested three. Maybe a little less.
Well, we'll just focus on the ones with a weak gap.
Okay. All right. That's good. Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, I mean, perhaps four gets you to 20, and then you're definitely over your 80% survivability. I mean, even last year, 18 of 22, I think, was more than 80%. But I think also we have a good idea of which ones are thriving out there. You know, that all the dogwood survived, and most of the junipers have survived. The service berry struggling a little bit more and slower, so I think we would obviously select the ones that we've shown, that have shown, you know, success here, and that's what we would choose as replacements, so.
What did not survive? Not the dogwood, what did the, when you say the species?
There was two that did well, junipers and the dogwood did well.
Yeah, yeah, the eastern red juniper and the, and the dogwood, the flowering dogwood, the native dogwood, both did well. And then the amalankia, which is a service berry, also native tree, but just, I think maybe it's a little too hot, a little too dry, you know, just struggled a little bit out here. So, I mean, the ones that are out there are doing okay, but only three of the seven, we're left with three of the seven of those. So I'd rather just, you know, I think putting one of the others will be much more effective.
So do we make a decision to suggest two of each of those, the red juniper and the two dogwood? Do you want to replant the ones that didn't survive? Or do you want to use a new species? I'd like to look at that, a more resilient species. Okay. Beth, did you hear Beth?
I, just a little bit, so.
So she suggested, do you want to try a different species, rather than going with the same? And obviously, not the ones that didn't survive, but a different one? Is there a different suggestion? Have you gone like...
Just replace them with the ones that we know are surviving.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't think that's a bad idea to have some diversity there, but also, you know, I'd just be afraid that we put those in and...
And they die.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they might not, and especially we're in a certain, you know, we've got, we had a better year with the rain and stuff. And I know in the beginning, we were struggling a bit with the property owner, I think, who was mowing, was still mowing the field, so we were kind of battling that a little bit to get those established. So, you know, I would, I could go with either. I could think about it a little bit, and if I, I could try, you know, send a suggestion for another species if the board wanted to entertain that. Otherwise, I think I'd feel comfortable with like two of the dogwood and two of the eastern red cedar, so.
I would recommend the more evergreens, because again, the point, the point is to sort of mask the solar panels. So something evergreen rather than deciduous, I think, would meet that goal the best.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, cedars, you can't really go wrong with those. Those are really hardy, pretty drought tolerant.
Definitely.
We just have such an unpredictable climate these days.
Right, and you can see how wide they're getting in those photos, too. They're definitely filling out, so. So, you know, I'd be okay with that, too. So, yeah, I think either one.
Beth recommended oaks, pin oak or red oak?
Pin oak or red oak. Very resistant, very common. Does well, and they take a long time to grow.
Yeah, they're very slow growing. That's the only problem with the oaks, so. Slow to establish, you know, at first.
Robert just stated that, too. Why, I don't know, why don't we just go with two and two of what has worked for now? And see what, and ask them to plant those and where the, they have the widest spaces.
Okay. I think that's fair.
Two, juniper? Yeah, red juniper. So do we need a motion of that? How do you, I don't know, stormwater, pretty much a tree motion. Yeah, you could.
Upon review of the report.
Oh, okay. All right.
Make a motion that you were asking to replace some trees that did not survive.
Okay, so that's, that's did that well. Upon the review of the report, okay, the board will recommend that we go with the ones with the greatest survival rate and replace four of the six that died. So.
I just want to move a second.
And any further discussion? Okay. We'll call off.
There are options, yes.
Are there, yes?
And Laura Schipren, yes. So, Reagan for your report.
Thank you. So, and sorry, I should have said this before you made the motion, but, or asked this. As far as timing wise, I mean, we, I'll talk to Nexamp and then see, but it, you know, it might make more sense, you know, if we push it a little bit, so we're not planting in like July, you know, if, as long as the board's okay with that, if we push and, you know, do that in the fall, maybe September or something, when, you know, conditions are a little bit more favorable.
Definitely.
Okay, great.
Unless you want to check the thirty-day forecast.
Yeah.
Day.
It's raining every day. I know, I know.
Then you can.
And, and we'll send it a supplemental memo, just, you know, with photos documenting it after it's installed, so, okay?
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. And I'm sorry, my video is not working. I would have liked to say hi to all of you.
Get it fixed for next time.
Thank you.
All right. Three point three, administrative updates and reports. Can you speak up a little while?
Sure.
I don't think it that you're yelling at me.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, right, because maybe. So I'm just going to go over a few things since our last meeting. First of all, we have two new hires, if you will, in the land use department. Jessica Vela is lands coordinator and Matthew Ratos is conservation agent. And they both assume their roles. The board received a letter from regarding Twenty-Sixth Scales Lane. And it is a request for compliance, for certificate of compliance. And that is an older stormwater management permit issued in two thousand and nineteen, along with the same plan review. Twenty-Sixth Scales Lane, you may remember it.
Well, we do.
Yeah, so they're just now going to request their certificate of compliance. So staff, we have the authority to go out and move forward with the compliance inspection. And if anybody would like to come on that site and visit, we can just let them know. So sixty-six Bayberry Hill Road, the board, well, the land use coordinator received an application, but it was returned. That's for a stormwater management permit and it's a major. So if, once the application comes back in, it was returned for, because it wasn't complete. But once it comes back in, the board will be reviewing that. Uh, sixty-six Bayberry Hill Road is a, is a common roadway with two old residential buildings that are being built. But it's, it's not there. Yeah, we did the A R for it recently. Yeah, was that, is that within Combs' old company? Okay, all right. But I've also attended an M G T C meeting, where again, M G T C is working on the regional transportation plan. We all mentioned in the last meeting, I guess, anyway, that's, that is being reviewed. And the mark buses, I just wanted to get a quick update that started. I don't know what the ridership is, but yeah, that's ongoing, so the schedules are available on the website. Any report from the A S, any?
What was left, I'll see my notes. As far as I know, there is some ridership. I haven't talked to Bart in regards to that. We just wanted to make sure flyers were going out. It's publicized, but our goal is to figure out at the end of the month what the ridership is for July and November twenty.
Okay, all right.
But the first year that we're running it is paid for.
Right.
That's what I'm sure.
Paid for.
Paid for.
Yeah. I'll ask for you, sorry.
Pilot program.
Um, it's not a pilot, it's going to be a program. We're just deciding what the ridership is going to be for the year, so that we can decide what the town will contribute and what the fares will be for the individuals.
It's Townsend's first year.
I know.
Okay, but it exists in other communities.
Yeah, so it's new.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, sorry. So lastly, again, same project, twenty-two West Meadow Road solar array. Part of the, part of the conditions in the decision for site plan is an annual report. And that was received by the board. Basically, it asked for annual energy production, which was, I think, one hundred and nine hundred and fifty-six hours, I was going to kill the hot hours, as senior holders. It, it asked for them to report the annual array maintenance, which was done on May fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. And the vegetation maintenance, which was mowing, conducted on July eighth and August twenty-seventh. So those are just a couple of things that I prepared for the company. A lot of it is in correspondence. So a lot of that seemed to be under three point four announcements and communications. So that was part of your report?
Yeah.
Yeah, but a lot of communications were. Campbell Farm is here? Under announcements and communications? I mean, you just left broke in with fourteen for Twenty-Sixth Scales. And then Campbell Farm?
Yep. The professional place that we're with you.
Okay, all right, and Three Wheeler? And Harbor Trace? Respannance from other towns? Conservation Commission is going to go to the hearing on Wednesday. A P M, Fifty-Sixth Bayberry Hill Road. It's a construction of a new house within the same apartment as the existing house. And the installation of a subtext system to replace the existing P L system. It's with the correspondence from the land use coordinator. Bayberry Hill Road, and this is a stop order that's been issued for Bayberry Hill Road. Until they file a application for a stormwater management permit. They started work out there, eventually, to build a permit, so we're waiting on that. And it will be a minor, so that will not be under the plan.
Okay.
From other towns, they have one of them in the notice of decision for a stormwater permit. There should be, Shirley has a hearing on Monday, August fourteenth. For a special permit for the protective zone by law, section four point six point three. That's from the Board of Appeals. It's required for any home occupation that does not comply with the requirements of section four point six point two or that is otherwise listed as a special permitted home occupation in the use regulation of a zoning district where the fields may grant a special permit only upon determining that the use will not create hazard, disturbance, or any to or near fire or injury to the neighborhood. And will not be unsightly disassembling from any publicly or neighboring property. County Shirley's only Board of Appeals, public hearing on the same night, Monday, August fourteenth. And that is for a variance relating to an absolute front yard setback of three feet or two down. But that's it for.
Thank you. Three point five is planning board regulations and final review, meaning for regulations one seven five dash twelve. I'm a big fan of conflict.
The last, or where is subdivision? What is, from thirty-five, I don't know, I don't care.
Yeah, and where do we leave off?
We finish? I think we finish. Yeah, I'm starting to find, um, the rest of the vision.
Yeah, I think that's where we.
We'll finish it, finish it?
No.
No, I think we have, this is where.
We have to still, we, we still, we have to review it. It'd be stuck at eleven, but twelve.
Oh, one is in nine eleven?
No, one seventy-five, twelve, we're just starting that.
Yeah.
Preliminary subdivision.
Yeah, this is the next one.
Because anything that we already did, you were making changes as we were going for it.
Okay, so this is the next one.
Okay, so it's up to you guys. Do you have a copy of, would you, that?
Oh, I know, I can't even have a copy of that.
Oh, wait a minute, once you leave that at twelve, so that's just part of preliminary subdivision.
Preliminary subdivision, so we have a copy.
Oh, I've, I've got it in the big book here. So we can do that if you like, because, and, and be done hopefully with that section for tweaking. So I just. Down, we'll be done with that section and the only other thing I want to get into tonight is the possible change to accessory bylaw that we recently approved.
No?
I want to just finish this.
Do you want, how about if we just finish this and then, then we'll go to, we can go to the next section on that, so work page. We don't want that. I don't know, but it's, here is twelve. This was, okay, I'm at one seventy-five dash twelve, preliminary subdivisions. But they should say the same thing. And I'm in, I'm looking in the bylaws, so. The old book that I have here, but let's see. I'll start off with the first paragraph. I can do it for so long and then that's it. Okay, A, any person before submitting a definitive plan for approval may submit to the planning board and to the Board of Health a preliminary plan. A plan shall initially approve such preliminary, the board shall.
And it's approved.
You, you mean.
Oh, yeah. The board, the board shall potentially approve such preliminary plans with or without notification suggested by it or agreed upon by the person submitting the plan. Or shall disapprove such a preliminary plan and, in the case of disapproval, shall state its reason for. Except as otherwise expressly provided, the provisions of the subdivision control law relating to a plan shall not be applicable to a preliminary plan and no register, update, or include, record a preliminary plan. And then number one, the approval of a preliminary subdivision is tentative and is not binding upon the planning board. The applicant assumes all risks of changes due to new information submitted during the process for approval of the definitive subdivision, including but not limited to the possibility of turnover in membership of the planning board.
Okay. When they do this action, is there a fee to them? Okay, so they have to pay a fee to go through this and, okay, so staff time is covered and whatnot. It's just nine, nine line. Okay, all right.
Number two, applications for approval of preliminary plans shall be submitted to the planning board according to the power requirements of one seventy-five dash ten. Number three, non-residential subdivisions require the submission of preliminary plans in accordance with this section. Number four, residential subdivisions do not require the submission of preliminary plans. Applicants are strongly encouraged to set up an appointment with the planning board prior to submitting preliminary plans to determine the extent to which the board feels a preliminary plan is viable.
Is this normally what you do with people who come and ask those questions?
Well, and I guess with somewhere, somewhere to come in, yeah, we would probably have a discussion with the building commissioner and land use coordinator. Instead of coming to the planning board for planning purposes. Typically, the planning board is for review of complete applications.
Right.
So should I, should I change that, decide on appointment with the committee board to maybe to the land use office or the building inspector or? Definitely, we'd want a staff member that is, you know, or, but like, the building commissioner would be certified, you know, so you would want somebody, even though it's zoning, to have that certification for. So I would, I would probably put, you know, the zoning enforcement officer, building commissioner, somebody who. And then you could also put a land, land use coordinator or planner. I, I don't know the best wording, but.
But it shouldn't be like planning board. They shouldn't be setting up a planning board. They wouldn't be setting up an appointment with the planning board.
I, I don't think so. I would.
I mean, they would do the building, the stuff, the roof.
Let's just think about how an applicant can come in.
Yeah, right.
I think, you know, it's not worth anyone's effort here. I mean, it's not worth entertaining anything here unless there is something of substance to look at. So a lot of these people are not aware of what the zoning requirements are. They don't even have a sort of department of the property, okay? So I think there should be some standards of, like an overview of the project. If it's a subdivision, how many lots do we have on, where the road may be and things like that, so that we can give them real direction as, you know, rather than having them have to do the job for a preliminary review. So. So, so I think with the land use coordinator. She should be able to set up some minimum requirements for that year, the preliminary.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. I think that people, when they come in. I mean, so much of this sounds like we're repeating ourselves. And so, and they're probably looking at it going like, what does this mean? But they should first go to the building inspector and land use coordinator. And find out what they need in order to go before planning.
Right. I agree. It may be premature for the building inspector because they don't know what to go.
Yeah, but he knows the process of.
Yes, he does.
He interprets the bylaws, so he can tell them, well, where's your lot? This is what you can do, this is what you can't do. Yeah.
Yeah, so at least prescreen them so that they're not having to make a many hearings. And then it becomes a progressive thing, oh, we need more now, and we need that. So the next better things are like that. I don't know how to phrase that, but I think Beth can come up with a program or what.
Or the land use coordinator. Because people need.
I have.
Like a checklist.
Yeah, I have.
You know, a handout, right? Instead of pages and pages of bylaws that they don't understand. You know, so.
Or maybe as another example, as it is now, people walk in the office, out of the booth, and everything stops to accommodate them. So once you are aware of what the applicant's interested in, you can have a form here. And say, okay, look at the, review this form of what we need. And then bring that in, and then I'll sit down with you. And see what else is needed to move on. Wouldn't that be a better procedure? You know, so just, just the way you walk in the building department now. They got pre, you know, pre-written forms, you know, this is for roof construction, this is for renovation, simple windows or whatever. So it's right there, but, and the building inspector does not have to be there. And this is, is this what you're doing? This is what we need, you know? A lot of that also can be put on the website.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing. Is that just, is that being considered to get permit forms on the website? That people can do things online rather than having to come to town now?
They have online permitting now, so they can do all of that over the internet. They don't have to.
Come here alone. Okay. So we're just comparing us for building permits.
We got, we got a lot of them just come on the target. So all of this can be pre-programmed in the website, and they can decide what they're looking for. And you get some generalization up there. And once they've satisfied, you know, most of what the table requirements are, then you can set up a plan. And say, well, they come in, you know, spending all the year or whatever, and we'll get to story or telling about.
Well, the goal of that was to get the building department set up on their own system. They'd have pieces of it to be added to that same thing. Well, it's, it's a permitting program, period. So you would add your piece to the pie.
Yeah, but if we go to the website, you have no right to play with it, right?
No, it's only for the building department.
So a lot of those, you're in hap, we can't get, only apply for those.
Maybe we would have wanted to find that, so each department could already have public information available.
We have the permanent information.
I know, but all that burden comes on the building inspector.
Well, I mean, it's really, you know, that person, the person to sit down, you know, with your project would be land use coordinator or building commissioner. And there's, then there's a lot good that can come out of that discussion face to face.
Well. I'm trying to think about how the public responds to it. If you're going to add a new house, or you've ever built a new house, you go to the building.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, if you're trying to do something that suits use, or needs a special permit, that information can be available for the planning board right away.
I think there's plenty.
Or the land use coordinator.
Yes, it is. It is. They have a table of uses? Is that what you're thinking of? A table of uses?
What happens now, the building official is responsible for entire zoning and planning board's process. So that happens when somebody appoints for a permit, okay? So if you apply for a permit, and he looks at that permit application, and he says, oh, wow, this is going to need a special permit, you're going to have to go to the planning board, all right? And he might determine you might need a zoning relief or whatever. So, and so that, that's how it normally works because he's the enforcement agent for the tenant. So now, that can be, that burden can be minimized and reduced if all this information is available through the building department, saying, refer to land use coordinator or refer to the planning board's guidelines and stuff. And then that would take less burden on him because the public has no idea of which regulatory stuff's involved.
However.
So we can do more self-help with that.
You are taking away the applicant's right to appeal to that decision.
No. No.
Oh, okay. I have all permits.
No. The permitting process has to remain the way it's determined until it's called to call. So that stays the same. Thing is, they can get a lot of information that the building official would normally have to provide them themselves in advance. So on, for example. If the building, on the building permit webpage, there was a question, this is what you're trying to do, okay? And you want to add a rush out, okay? Well, then it will scare you from right away. And so a lot of it can decrease or increase. And say a lot of the light and time, not just on our staff, but on the individual, that of itself. So once he knows a preliminary, so in other words, what happens now? You walk in, just a late person says, I want to rent a family. Well, he looks at an application, and there's like a such as that number, what number, and, you know, and then there's a hearing involved, a budget list, and all this stuff. So if that, if there's a mechanism where the painter can pre-get that information, understand where it is, or where it's found, you know, you could say it's on your tax bill or whatever. And then the application will be burned along in one of the portals. So what happens with portals and even a handwritten application is they get delayed because there's missing information, right? So a lot of people don't know what the front yard requirement is. The front yard setback, there is zoning district and things like that.
But that is in the bylaws.
Oh?
That is in the bylaws.
I know, they don't know it.
Oh, yes, it is.
What, what, I understand what you're saying is the process. And I, I agree with you that the burden is on the building inspector. However, how the process has been is that an individual will come in, and they are either sent up to the land use office or to the, to Beth as the administrator of that. And Beth is the one that walks them through that. Or the person in the building department will walk the person through those. And there's a checklist that, I mean, when I was on the planning board, there was a checklist that was involved. These are the things that you need to do, and they walk the client through those pieces of it.
Well, I, um, I don't want to spend a long time on this subject. But maybe it's a better way to handle that. It's just more technology if the, if the user of the website has more resources than before, they can talk to us. This all began with preliminary review thing. And we've experienced here, people come in with a, they want a disclaimer, and they don't need it. They mess with their own law, okay?
Well, we can't do that here. And a lot of times they do.
No, of course we can't. And we have to tell them that this is not going to work.
Well, they don't usually get to see that if that's what they have. I mean, they don't get to see us if that's what they have.
No, we had it up with the. Relieve your waivers, you know? There you go.
Okay. All right, let's, let's try to finish this section. Preliminary subdivisions. Yeah. We are now, oh, do we want to make any changes to number four? Because it says. To determine extent to which the board feels a permanent plan is viable. Just please have that paid for. Is there some, some, or a strength? Yeah, it's on that. 对我说 applicants are strongly encouraged to set up an appointment with a planning board prior to submitting preliminary plans to determine, or do you want to say they're strongly encouraged? I mean, you can use stronger language instead. But you could just strike it. Don't worry about it.
It just, this leave it resident, subdivision should not require a special plan. It just leaves it that way. I like that.
Yes, we should be working on it, right?
Yeah. Just write the whole thing. Yeah. I like that. That, that works.
And then once they call, whoever they're talking to should be telling them to make an appointment and get all the lists and what they need.
So then.
Five.
Number five. The application shall obtain the following. A, nine prints of a plan for kids according to the subsidy in this section. B, an original complete application.
Should it underscore complete?
Oh, underscore complete.
Yeah.
Or emphasis.
Yeah.
Yeah, you put. Just, just, I have to emphasize complete or bold, whichever legal you want to do enforcing.
Okay.
I don't know if it's going to prevent you from that.
Right, but it's going maybe to draw a little attention to it? Okay.
Wait, how many? Complete, only single.
It's an effort that, well, Beth, Beth is the one that does the checklist, so hopefully.
Then C is eight photocopies of complete applications together with eight photo reductions of the plans produced to eleven each and by seventeen inches.
And that is still the case, right? The system. Yeah, we also like to add in the PDF file. Oh. Everything in.
Electronic and PDF.
So they have, they have to do both? Yeah, the electronic copy and the print. It's, they always request those, sometimes we'll put it in there.
See.
Okay.
In electronic.
Photocopy, sorry.
And we'll give the, the print copies because what's that in my, child's book?
So why do you need nine prints and only eight copies when you have eight?
We didn't get eight copies.
Yeah, you did. We pick one out.
For the.
Yeah. Can you add in PDF copies? Where would that go?
Well, just do and.
Since they made photocopies, you want the electronic files?
No, but digital file.
Digital file. Digital file.
That's like a PDF.
Okay.
And that can send to everybody involved in the problem.
What digital file required? Right? Digital file required for.
Or files. Oh, yeah. Plus PDF and digital format added on as a second thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. However, I love that people want digital.
I don't, I want to come up. I think a PDF is the only way to do it. So we can't do all of them.
Oh, okay, so you don't want PDF?
We want PDFs.
Okay. Oh, PDF and digital file. Yeah. You don't want a word copy?
No, or any, any other.
Right, so PDF is required. And then the required fees.
Yeah. And then D is written identification involving anticipated wage providing. With my identification and the all, and just, what does that mean by that?
Well, there's a.
I understand that word.
Yeah. They say, um, according to or per section 145-10A. Oh, we need a waiver from this requirement.
Anticipating waiver requirement.
Okay. And then when somebody comes in, no one have, and they've read the bylaw, and they don't, they don't believe that they are going to be able to do that portion. Okay? So, but there's waivers that they can get depending on what it is, and we've granted them. Because in some instances, that don't make sense. It's almost like each, each project is different, each project, you know, whatever. Some have conservation issues, some are perfectly dry, you know, nothing. So I think that that's what that means, but how do you want to say it that it's clearer to you?
Yeah. How about, um, they, yeah, but they need to identify the waivers anticipated in the definitive subdivision.
Well, they can request a waiver, but that would be very specific on what they want waived.
Right. So waivers are not actually connected until the definitive plan is admitted. So that's why it says anticipate waiver requests.
Okay.
So I guess. Waiver requirements, yeah. Identify all anticipated waiver requirements in writing.
I like that.
Yeah, I like the way that worded.
Yeah, because written identification, okay. I think that was the problem. Identification of all anticipated waiver requirements in writing. Right?
I think that's going to encourage more.
I was just, I was just going to say, identify all anticipated waiver requirements in writing.
Identify all anticipated waiver requirements in writing. Is that better?
Yeah.
Identify all anticipated waiver requirements in writing.
Okay. And then, now that change.
That gives us a clue ahead of time of what they're thinking. And that gives us a clue ahead of time of what they're thinking in their proposal board, like where they, they feel their issues are. Okay? And is that what the, would that be considered like part of? What we then see an issue to relay back to them?
Yeah, that's, it opens the discussion. Yes.
Like if that's what you want, but we don't see that that's going to happen. And you don't, because not a lot of.
Whatever, yeah.
They've, they've in the past, especially with a couple of ones that you've dealt with, they've listed them out. Need a waiver for this, for this, for this, for that. So that the board can look at it.
Yeah.
And say, these are, these are what they're going to be asking for for this preliminary. And say, these are, these are what they're going to be asking for, for this preliminary, so.
Yeah, yeah. So just a little wordsmaning.
So, all those waivers should be identified upfront.
Upfront.
Right. So you, you as the board know what they're asking for?
I mean, sometimes it might even happen that we don't see the need of something.
Hmm.
So they don't have to do that particular thing in this particular case.
Or if they do this, then you don't.
We don't need the other.
Right, so we show it to the board area.
Right. Saves time in the future.
Right, right, well, that's sort of important, this is what you.
Yeah. Application fee, now, this is where I thought we could change it.
Yeah.
We could change it to, uh, preliminary subdivision plan is a thousand and per lot is two hundred. So, to save this in the future, it might be better to put, there is a fee for, um, the preliminary subdivision plan. And you'll find that, please get the updated fee from, uh, however you want to say this. Don't put any numbers in.
Yeah.
They change from time to time, okay, but they exist. So in the bylaw, they exist.
Right, we don't, with them.
Oh, well, you don't have to change the number every time, okay?
The other question on P is, um, some subdivisions can be huge and others can be very small.
Right, and you may look at that differently.
What if you said something about contact, uh, I don't know, putting in contact with the building commissioner or public current fees or something?
Some of these, for subdivisions are, no, these are the fees to the planning board.
Right.
Oh, okay.
So, now, these are the.
Oh, okay, I've been up to the.
Yeah, yeah, the planning board, okay.
Okay, the planning board for, uh, fee schedule?
Yep.
You can do a fees schedule and, 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 too, I believe that. Just do, um, standards, these several for all subdivisions in a chart form or something.
Yeah, but those would be updated, they wouldn't be in the bylaw.
No, because we have to change them every time we move.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So however you want to.
So you could write your sentence, like, the application fee for a preliminary subdivision plan and each subsequent lot is as shown on the current planning board fee schedule, or in, in effect at the time of your application's submittal or something. I, I agree with Laurie to, to try to remove the numbers from this because they are changing so much.
Yeah. So the same under one, thank you, Jessica, um, for the separate consultant fee in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, you require the review review of the preliminary plans by civil engineers or, but, um, we don't know what that fee is.
Right.
So, same, same kind of thing.
Yeah.
Refer to.
Oh, it's pre-scheduled.
All right, so now we're at, uh, number two. Okay, any amount remaining in the fiftyth grade GA comes from the consulting fee. Will normally be retained in anticipation in the subsequent then the plan. It will be determined only on written request. Number three, when an application is rejected, is incomplete, but denied based on obvious flaws without detailed review by the board and a re-application is submitted, the board will consider at the board's discretion waiving a portion of the reapplication fee. In no manner will the reapplication fee be reduced to over one hundred dollars.
Um. I.
But that would be detailed review.
The hundred dollars is too low.
Isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, that was just, why don't we just put that in the fee schedules? Of the application fee.
Oh, and C, the fee schedule?
Right.
Because, yeah, because if you're, if it's a thousand dollar application and they were, I, I think they're going to be more careful, but if they're uh, really sloppy about it and it has to be reviewed again, that's your time, you know, so I'm taking away your time from doing something else that might be more productive. So, um, we'll put it in the fee schedule, depending on what it is, it's going to be a portion thereof, but.
Well, I think. We, we don't want to be updating this, we all agree on that every time it's been changed, and so. So, um, I guess we really have to work in developing a fee schedule periodically, every five years or something like that.
Don't we just do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we don't.
Sure, we got it, I remember doing this.
But is there anything in there that refers to, um,
Reapplication.
Reapplication?
And put this up. Replace the board and make that to new evidence in the level two. When doing.
The fees?
Yeah, because it says here, it says, detail, the, the, the application is still denied. Because to me, I feel like this application is going to be rejected and denied by administrative staff. So it wouldn't even get to the planning board, but the way it's worded here, it sounds like the board has to make a decision on the reapplication fee. So maybe that could be, you know, removed and changed to the land use coordinator, so it stays in the.
Yeah, it stays, it not at the, at the board's discretion. It's not the board's discretion.
For that, after the next year, we're.
So the, the board will consider, so, so you've got to just change the verbiage after and a reapplication is submitted. Everything else gets struck out. And then you put, um, C, fee schedule for reapplication fee.
Yeah.
And then it's, it's out of here, but it's going to be on that.
The fee schedule.
Yeah, the fee schedule.
What is that, after we get the tell me, that's one after the whole of that, right? All assessable.
It's not the fee schedule was in effect already.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
There's only a few, there's a few that have to go approved by, there's a few that have to be approved by, um, meeting to change the fee. But these were not ones that put these.
Yeah, ones go to town meeting for fee approval.
And before you go too far, um, the guys will be reviewing them again.
I was going to say, okay, all right, fine, aren't you just, okay. Okay. Just say I refer to fee schedule to finish that off.
Number three.
Okay.
Very soon.
Okay.
All right.
So onward we are to see the requirements for preliminary subdivision plans. So then, in your review, because you do this, what do you see that either can be removed or needs to be added or needs to be clarified? Because this is what you do.
For waterways, for instance, the stormwater. We have, um.
Okay.
I think everyone natural, but don't say it's just a natural water, it's in a general manner. Water, that's quite a lot of water. I mean, it would be nice to see what was delineated. It would be nice to also be some of the project authorities. The, on the law.
So you could put that as existing natural resources, maybe that could be sort of a umbrella classification?
Yeah, I know, it says existing, well, existing natural waterways in a general manner. But I feel like, uh, maybe it should be a little. It doesn't, uh, really that, that representation.
Yeah, you should insert that. Um, would that go under stormwater management?
Would you think they're? They're, uh, they're supposed to put the proposed stormwater management system on it. Three, Jackson, just take natural waters in a general manner.
No, no, it's not, what is it, in a general manner, I mean.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, but if they are going to put in the, I mean, can you just do?
Yeah, I mean, this is, well, would, would that come into play if you just have, like, wetlands and?
Including areas out there, which is small, waterways, actual waterways, moving on. She just, well, expensive, finding a building within her business outright, which is small, waterways, actual waterways.
So is that where, either one, oh, do you want to put it in both as far as, um, wetlands delineated? Because that's not written anywhere.
I don't see it, that's a good idea.
And when you were talking trees, you were talking mature trees should be.
I would like to see that, but. Some sort of, um, amount of, uh, clear cutting, you know, I'm not sure if they, they have it in the preliminary stages, but that's, that is something we're, we're trying to work on in the land use department is, um, you know, just being mindful of land clearing activities in construction, in new construction, so.
Maybe that can play a little bit. You can put like maybe an asterisk or just a note stating, um, planning will look at mature trees, will look at trees on the property and how clearing will be done. Or something like that, doesn't have to be there then, but then they already have the note that we're going to be looking for it.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, does that make sense, or? No.
Yeah, I mean, it could be under that, the proposed stormwater management system, including, um, estimating area of tree removal. Tree clearing or tree removal or land disturbance or whatever, you know, that would be great to know. If they're going to put the proposed stormwater management system in to this, then they're going to probably have a figure of how much land disturbance and, oh, and tree clearing will be going on, you know, for the soils. That's all part of the planning, uh, planning of the stormwater management system, so.
Okay, so our will have delineate the wetlands and, and we'll have, uh, tree removal. And. Land disturbance. Okay. So you can use your verbiage on that, boy, you know, do it approval, you know, final.
I see this list doesn't mention utilities at all.
I haven't read that. Utilities, I haven't read utilities somewhere. If you don't see it, add it. I, I just. Existing post bond rewinds is O. Um, do you want to put, uh, utilities identified?
Or, or if you wanted to add, existing of the post lines and streets, ways, use, including rights of way, tactics, or other restrictions and, and public areas, general manner, what are you going to expand that to? Like, if you're looking at.
Utilities, because some are either overhead or underground.
Yeah. I guess it's up to the developer to decide how he's going to get the power, if he or she's all right.
Yeah.
Or he's supplying the power and water, so I'm not sure that that's something really, yeah, in a preliminary.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, but do you not refer to new development?
When we get an engineered plant, isn't that on the plans?
It's in it, it should.
It's a preliminary plan, so utilities will be discussed.
They have to provide it.
Okay.
For the highway or property, the one property.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's a.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we're, um, where are we now? I, are we at two, um, one seventy? Under C, number two.
Oh, I have one more thing to ask, uh, one, S. In zoning classification of the land, including any zoning, zoning boundaries and overlay districts.
Okay, yep. That would now be true. Because we already have them now, but they're being more. Okay, two, you go, okay.
No street may be labeled a public way unless approved by such evidence. Based on a review of the town records that will demonstrate that the way is legally a public way. The use of the phrase public way on mass of planes, whether or not such things have been registered does not by itself constitute evidence. Three, all plans should be drawn to a scale of one inch equals twelve feet. However, if it's the policy of the planning board to waive this requirement without written request whenever the scale is increased for the purpose of allowing the entire plan to hit a lock sheet. In, in the opinion of the planning board, there is no wrong with information on clarity by such increase in scale. Any such waiver shall not carry over to the definitive.
Okay, but that's someone that usually do it.
Four, okay, any way known to be private way shall be clearly labeled as such. Five, the applicant is required to submit such additional data as will demonstrate that the definitive plan will satisfy the requirements for definitive if such data is in the scope of the preliminary. Specifically, data showing per circulation test holes and deep hole observation for the lots shown on the conventional plan. And six, the applicant is strongly encouraged to submit a draft community impact statement. And D, engineering review. Upon receipt of a preliminary plan, the planning board may select an engineering firm as a top site consultant for review of the plan and board one copy the plans from the engineering firm. This may be done prior to any determination by the planning board with.
This may be done prior to any determination by the planning board with respect to the completeness of the application. Is that generally what you've done? Because. And who pays for that? But I didn't think that was in a preliminary. Reading something. Okay.
So.
I remember it in the formal definitive quote about the preliminary. Yeah. Okay.
Well, so again. That needs to be published in advance.
People need to know that. People need to know that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
I agree.
A lot of the applicants we've been seeing. Start out with no idea of how much all this cost to go in. And then overwhelmed with the engineering and all that expense. So for them to know ahead of time what you have to do here is very important.
Yeah. Number two, the engineering review of formulary plans will be the purpose of determining the following. A, based on the available data, do the technical aspects of the plan comply with the requirements of these rules and regulations? B, are there any areas or issues of specific concern related to the purpose of these rules or regulations that would require close attention of the planning board? C, what design alternatives, if any, should be considered prior to submitting the definitive plan? D, what specific additional data, if any, should be required for the definitive plan? Examples of such data may be specific soil tests, traffic studies, measurements, et cetera. Such data shall be specific to the circumstances of the formulary plan. And E, what modifications, if any, should be made? Okay, E, incomplete applications. Incomplete applications will be rejected. The application fee will not be refunded. The consulting fee will be returned upon request minus cost already incurred. If the applicant does not request return of the consulting fee, the board will sue the applicant and tends to refile and apply the fee to reapplication. And two, for an application submitted by certified mail, the determination that an application is incomplete will be made no later. Through the first regularly scheduled meeting to occur seven or more days after receipt. For an application submitted at a meeting of the planning board, the determination would be no later than the next subsequent regularly scheduled planning board meeting. And F, approval or disapproval of formulary plans. One, to the extent that can be determined from the data submitted, the plan must satisfy all designs standing with the definitive subdivision. Number two, the board may approve the formulary plan with or without modifications according to the provisions of Massachusetts, general law, chapter forty-one. Yeah. Whatever that's revising as eighty-one S. And three. The board may, as part of such decision, enter the five specific issues that must be addressed in the definitive. Including explicit questions to be answered as part of the community impact state. In the case of a non-residential subdivision or a residential subdivision exceeding twenty lots, these requirements may include the scope of a traffic study. Okay, and that's, so that's the end of 175-12. So.
Well, same way, they have to do a lot to get over there.
Looks pretty much.
Yeah, but doing one is pretty much there.
It's almost there, I'm sure.
So I guess basically you're doing the definitive plan and just asking somebody to review it to make sure you said everything.
Yeah, it's really for a public hearing.
Yeah, so. And wouldn't you really want to have a plan pretty much decided then? Just because it's something like, yeah.
Well, I don't know. There was a problem. And I. Because I think the formulary plan was. You know, what do you think of the idea? Do we need to do conservation of this?
I guess what I was looking at is you would basically do a definitive plan as best, as close as you could get it in just having a review to make sure you didn't miss anything.
In terms of the applicant, he doesn't want to over invest in this unless he has a positive feeling that it's a doable situation.
Yeah, I know that.
So to burden him with subject design and, you know.
Well, he would have already, you know, if you're at that point, at some point before that point, you would have had your perk tested done. There is no preliminary subdivision if you haven't already done perks and deep holes and know where you stand.
I know there might be a large property owner there, okay? Who has a potential buyer that wants to invest in his land. And that buyer wants to get an idea of what his total investment would be. And why would he proceed with a? A lot of purchases and sales agreements are based on stuff like this. So I don't. When I look at everything we did here, it's almost like a definitive plan we had. So it means a speculative buyer or a speculative investor would take a risk in putting all this money in.
But wouldn't you, if you were thinking of doing a subdivision, wouldn't you have done some kind of not formulary work to make sure that it's even feasible to go ahead before you even did all this paperwork? You also had to pay money.
Well, I mean, the bylaw already tells you what you can do, right? What kind of work you can build and what the zoning is.
Wouldn't you want to at least look at the plan and do some whatever research to make sure that it's. Going to be viable to do what you want to do? I don't know.
Okay, if it's okay with you guys, I'd really like to get to the next thing. But you guys.
Yeah.
If you thought, I don't care, who is I, I can get to it in my event, you know.
The thing was like, remember, we're petrol, which they're a little bigger than us. And they. Certain areas of their town, both of them have a quarter. And that makes a little bit of a difference. Yeah, it's a good idea. So I asked for this to be put on the agenda, 145-36. This is the. I think that's thirty-six, accessory apartments. And so under this. Exactly, in an imminent, right, too. Whether or not. I have a three points, yes, you want to reflect that? Yeah. I already know that we're getting a.
So you're looking at accessory apartments?
Yeah. So a decision was handed down. And Chaz, I'm just going to let you chime in. Wherever you're. Accessory apartments in a residential district. The board found the following. Four areas considered. In terms of towns and zoning laws, oh, 145-65. 145-36, E, affordable accessory apartment program. But that comes under. 145-65 F. 145-36. 145-36. Let me just go to the decision then. Of the zoning board. In their decision. The applicant agrees to abide by the terms of the affordable accessory apartment program defined in 145-36 E. 145-36 E. Any owner or owners of single-family dwelling, R, A, R, B, district seeking a new or renewal of accessory apartment permit shall agree to abide by the terms. Of local housing agency or partnership program to ensure a moderate income occupancy of the apartment, thus creating a period. Of not less than five years. The local housing partnership shall permit deferral of the program if the homeowner wishes to accommodate initially a family, initially. A family member or members. For the purpose of this section, family members shall be defined as one of blood, step, adopted relatives. However, or spouse, or spouse, mother, father, sister, brother, son, daughter, uncle, aunt, grandmother, grandfather. And or their spouses. Should the family member vacate. The accessory apartment, the agreement with local housing agency or partnership shall be voided. Providing the accessory apartment is discontinued and the dwelling reverts back to compliance 145-16 A. Any apartment proposed under shall comply with all applicable provisions of this 145-36. Any permit granted pursuant to this section shall be a five years duration. Revocable upon sale of the property unless the buyer by written notice of the Board of Appeals agrees to the local housing agency partnership program. For the balance of the term. Okay, so we have a situation and this is a decision that was handed down to. The applicant who has a single-family home with an accessory apartment from the time that the property was built. And it was family members who had lived there. So even though we have a lot of words here describing what a family member is, state of Massachusetts really can't define a family member. So it could be anybody who's walking down the street and you brought them in, you're my, you're my family. Okay.
Hi, I'm your auntie.
Okay, so having said that, and that may be where they have to go. In this decision and originally beginning in the fall of last year. This couple was spoken to and agreed to. Affordable housing for a period of fifteen years, you know, so that it would count towards the affordable housing. The local housing agency or partnership shall permit deferral of.
Would you stop this in a minute here?
No, I want to finish.
I do too.
Okay.
I do too, really. That statue that we're handling right now. It's so our hand, auntie.
Okay, I'm going to agree with you. I just want to finish the situation so that hopefully we can fix it. I'm trying to fix something.
I do, I do.
Okay, so this is the decision that was handed down in March and recorded in February to this owner. And recorded the end of March. So because he agreed to this. And for the purpose of this section, family members shall be defined as one of blood, whatever, goes onto the same thing. And it doesn't, what it doesn't say is that in order to comply with this, you have to have a lottery. For the applicant. In order to comply with this, you have to have a lottery, but that doesn't, that's not written here. And he didn't know it until I tried to help him and get to a point where. Because it's been now, it's weird July, they've had no income since last fall.
Is this the middle of Ryan Road here?
No, this is on Ryan Road. We could trust Ryan Road or somewhere. One of the boards addressed Ryan Road. So right now, there's no mechanism for them to get. When I'm first reading, because there's a lot of emails back and forth with Beth and I and some Rico, Rico was from where? The guy that was offering yarn. Who I did contact her again yesterday, Friday, Friday or Saturday. And by email and she said, no, it was late Friday. And she said she did get my emails with the decision and she didn't have a chance to look at it. She's still got it over the weekend, we'll get to it Monday, but that didn't happen. So. And her suggestion was going to be an amendment to the zoning board decision. Because we're not, unless Chance has more of an update. We're, we, the town is not in a position to offer. A lottery process to help the applicant who agreed to have an accessory unit. If he doesn't go through, according to the state, if he doesn't go through the lottery process, which is, which is, can be anywhere from ten to twenty-five thousand dollars. And somebody with a single-family home and apartment can't afford that, that's cost prohibitive, okay, it doesn't work. So right now, he's, because they agreed to do that, the board of house said that they had to. Change, upgrade their subject system, which they did. But they already had a four-bedroom home and it's still a four-bedroom home, they had a four-bedroom subject sign. But they had him put a tank in, he put the tank in. And now he's not had any income since last fall.
Does no work.
So that's seven months, eight months, nine months, ten months probably. So how do we fix it?
I think. I don't. There's so many problems here that we will have to come back.
And call. I'm going to call it point of order here. The discussion is about the bylaw, it's not about a situation, it's not about that decision. What you have on the agenda is a discussion about the bylaw 145-36.
Right. Okay, but it. It got on the agenda because of the situation. And I don't know how to explain it any other way. So can you build the apartment for a relative?
But again, you're talking about a specific situation and your agenda item is a discussion about. About the bylaw, not about the situation, but about the bylaw. I just want to caution you on that.
No, but that situation is an example of kind of issues the surface. And the bylaw as it's written. It's almost like. And the bylaw as it's written, it's almost like, it doesn't do it.
But, but it says right here, it's for family members.
The bylaw is written for family members, for affordable, um, and then affordable.
Or, it could be one or the other.
It could be one or another, but it doesn't like that.
So what are we going to get that for?
Okay, affordable. Where does the affordable come in? It's kind of fine where it says affordable. I don't see the words, but then I think.
There's a whole section, you know, there are so many housing programs.
Uh.
Yeah, I don't know, it's so hard to tell who are dominating everyone.
With the housing shortage being the way it is, why can't we change that bylaw, make a recommendation to change that bylaw? That if you have accessory apartment, a legal accessory apartment in your home that the board of health has approved, um, that you can rent out that unit?
That's right.
There's residential neighborhood, okay? And you need to be mindful of your neighbor in a residential neighborhood. If you're renting out an apartment, um, to the public. Just need to be mindful of that. It's a neighborhood issue. That's why we have special permits. It's for public input. Neighbors of others can discuss an application. Um, but that's part of why we do that. That's the public process.
We all know where to have this, okay? To grant the accessory unit. And it's supposed to have certain requirements and restrictions. The occupant of that unit changes. The owner is burdened with an empty unit. Once it collects revenue from it, it's sitting there, it's paying taxes on it. So it should remain as a rental unit. I mean, to, to find commoners to one specific group with a whole bunch of specific limitations with that thing, um, it, it's, it's not going to benefit anybody. I mean, really, you can't even define like a family unit. And then this lottery question comes in. I'm like, so, okay, um, I spent eighty thousand dollars putting in accessory unit for my, um, my wife's power, okay? And now, um, she has up to every time in her nursing home. I have just spent all this money on paying the taxes and taxes while you can't run through. That's not fair. That's not right. And it also discourages.
But then again, do you want in a residential neighborhood, everybody putting in an accessory apartment?
Well, but it doesn't mean it's fair or cheating, okay?
But now you, now you take it a residential neighborhood, it made it into a multi-family neighborhood, and you're taking away the whole thing because.
Let's face reality, right? People can't afford a house. They don't rent those jobs. Um, what's the our town's role in helping this, okay? So obviously, this is all economics. I'm tired of it. I'm tired of low income people and all these different housing programs with all such a focused limitation on one priority that don't integrate with anybody else. And we're supposed to accommodate them all. And I'm not just talking about as a member of the planning board. I'm talking about as a member of, as an architect. I can't deliver all these things, all right? I got net several here, and I got, you know, elderly housing here, and affordable, and all these things, and aging housing, and a whole lot smells well, so, okay? So if we're trying to work to make people get housing, we can't burn them at more expense because it's not gonna happen. It's not feasible. So we have existing housing here that can accommodate an indoor apartment or that one bed, one unit. Um, and we, the town itself has been a, allowing, uh, the housing unit is supposed to produce and stuff. So why can't that count, you know?
Well, the prob, again, the problem is that the owner agrees to it, okay? We have that, which is allowable as far as. Well, the zoning board did a exception, if you will, and granted a permit for them to rent it out, but it had to come under the affordable guidelines. And that's what cannot be met, and we don't have a path for that. And granted, no, it's granted to a family member. That's an option. Every special one that has, they can go to a family member or it can be an affordable unit in the L I P program. So.
Okay, so the only thing that's gonna happen now is we won't get the affordable. Because the L I P is not an option. Again, it has to be about the bylaw. But this question is about the bylaw.
Oh, okay.
Maybe there's a possibility that it's our situation or we're going to maybe able to do it on some other program or something, um, but, but like you said, the intent that they did in the beginning is not achieving. And I, I just feel.
Okay, well, let's go back to the bylaw then, because we can't change that, um. How can we make?
I think we have to come back to the something.
I think I have a suggestion that you, that you appoint a subcommittee to look at the bylaw. And I forget before, last time the bylaw was amended, it was done by a subcommittee or a group of the planning board who studied it.
Um, since you two have opposing views.
We do?
Yeah.
It's just different points of view.
Yeah, so perhaps you can come up with a solution that will make everybody happy. I don't particularly see every house out there going to put an accessory apartment in their home. That is just not gonna happen.
And they should have their optional try.
Yeah, I mean, if they needed it, but I, but I just, I don't see that. You've got subject systems, you've got, you've got other things besides.
Right, so there are other obstacles to go in. And then it, it, it should be allowed in the special permit or something, so the town's aware of what's going on where. Then put some down in there, right? So a lot of that is based on.
So, so all you need to do is add something that says, okay, because this family member no longer takes the property, then how do you go about renting it to somebody else, no?
I don't think you can do that, right?
I mean, isn't that, but this is something I have.
Can I, can I leave this to the two of you to, to do outside of this meeting?
I'll send you some thoughts, I'll, and I'll get your thoughts, and we can actually.
If you can come up with, thank you. Come up with a solution to, to, to bring this bylaw into today's needs instead of what it's meant for three, four years.
The law is, I think one of the approaches to deal with this is call it an accessory apartment period, okay?
Now, may I, may I interject a bit? Part of the reason why the, the bylaw was written the way it is written, if you're not renting to a family member, you have to adhere to the Massachusetts Fair Housing Practice. This is why an affordable apartment has the limitations on it. It's that you have to, you have to market it. You have to show the state that you are being fair to the, the, the people that are, that are coming in. This is where the lottery fits in. If you.
Under their terms.
Under their terms. If you allow, if you allow an individual to rent an apartment to anybody that they want, it's not fair housing to the state.
That's right, but we don't have to accept that program, really?
Yes, we do.
What?
Because if it's a state law.
It's a state law.
I.
I mean, you can't, you can't. For, for any apartment or just under the affordable program?
This is why it's written the way it's written, and this has been passed by town council itself. This is why, this is why it's written the way it's written. It's because if you're not renting to a family member, you have to, you have to follow state guidelines, the Fair Housing Act, um, that you have to have to make sure that you are, um, allowing any renter the ability to, to, um, to rent that particular apartment. And you also have to make sure that the neighborhood is okay with the fact that you're renting from. So, you know, from, that's the way it is. This is the state law.
So, is state laws, I'll link this up with state law.
State law, every accessory apartment?
I mean, that's friendly.
I guess it was amended, there was a lot of research done.
And we got town council in here that went over that.
You can't change, yeah, how do you change state law? It's like, it's not change.
They lost supremacy to any, any.
They're not gonna get any housing.
It's like, we have to change federal law.
Right. So it's a whole thing. They have a bunch of legislatures, guys. Some don't understand how these impact anything. It just sounds good, and it's, it's white hat legislation, and they don't want to be against affordable or whatever. So they don't even, they make these laws, they don't even concur with anybody, having public meetings on them, or voting on them, or, you know, making the public aware. And then next thing you know, it's a year out, and it's like, oh.
Yes, I understand a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine fifteen P M. Over. Oh, call vote?
I don't want to vote on this. Why do I let the state do the planning for? You seem to know better than us.
True.
Okay, yes.